You may have obstructive views, sorry.
That's alright. I can't see them, I can't see them.
Yeah?
You don't really see them.
He's already loud, he said that.
I didn't know he was gonna do that one, sure.
Safe for fun.
Different department, I don't require it.
Alright, Hawkins County Commission, all of my prayers.
Uh, before we pray, I'd like everybody to remember the Chestnut family. And I have a couple unspoken, anybody else got any prayer requests?
D.R. Harrison.
Alright, got you. Anybody else? Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for another day, we thank you for another opportunity to just get enjoying the glory that you've made for us. But we ask you to stay with us and to just guide our hearts in this meeting, Lord, and to help us not just to vote our conscience, Lord, but help us to remember who we're voting for, voting for the people. And help us to vote what they will have us do too, Lord. We ask you to watch over us, keep us safe, give us some sins and many shortcomings, keep your name in prayer. Amen. Dancing, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, we have twenty-one to meet for a prayer.
I told him to go down and call up the dentists, but...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, those of you that acknowledge you have a conflict of interest, namely Jeff Barrett, do you acknowledge that conflict of interest for all actions and purposes of this meeting?
I do.
As the ring could reflect, if Mr. Barrett has done so.
Uh, do we have any commendations or recognition? We'll move on down to the officer supporting committee reports.
Just need to read this into the minutes. The three-star program requires that we fill out a physical strength efficient government confirmation letter. Uh, that letter is in all the commissioners packets. Uh, if you've got any questions, we'll be allowed to answer those questions. And it just has to be turned in to the comptroller's office before we can receive our three-star certification, so let's hope that is.
At this time, I want to record, uh, recognize District Attorney Dan O'Driscoll.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. My purpose of being here is to update you on the opioid lawsuit that I filed on your behalf. This came in the King's Court, uh, for Solon County Circuit Court, uh, Circuit Court. Judge Moody is, is promised to give us a trial date in 2020. We were pushing hard for that to be the first part of 2020, no later than April, is our hope. Uh, I need to tell you, one of the complicating factors that's come up is the alleged Purdue settlement, and of course, they are in bankruptcy. The Tennessee Attorney General entered into an agreement with Purdue that we do not agree with. Uh, we will fight that as much as we can. However, Purdue is in bankruptcy, we may have to live with that settlement. It's just too early to tell. We are proceeding with our lawsuit, and we're in though with mountain product and other defendants. One of the things you need to be aware of, I understand the Tennessee Attorney General's put out a lot of information to you. You need to understand that the last thing we need is for the Tennessee Attorney General to control the proceeds from these lawsuits. Because if, if he does, it'll never come back to the campus. And so I'm working hard to make sure that you get the damages you're entitled to as a result of what these companies have done. Second thing I need to tell you is he has sent out a letter through CTA, I understand, advising you that you do not need to be opting into the negotiating class. And it's for purposes of my lawsuit, you're already in the, the negotiating class. My attorney is on the negotiation class team. So you're already in it, you don't have to take any action at all as far as my lawsuit's concerned. Um, I'm gonna send a more detailed letter, uh, to, to your counsel, Mr. Phillips, this week, and he can share that with you to kinda give you a little bit more of a background of this. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has regarding the lawsuit I had. Alright, thank you.
At this time, I want to recognize, uh, Jason Jesse Law, attorney of Chris Jesse.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I, too, am here to just kinda update everyone. We have sent, uh, letters out to the county mayor and advised to come meet with you. What we'd like to do in the next few weeks is to schedule a time of going to closed session to talk about some attorney-client privileged information about possible settlements and numbers. As the Attorney General said, though, and one thing I've said from the beginning, is we do not want the state's Attorney General to control the money. Because we do not believe it'll come back to the county. We were involved in the tobacco litigation, and we did not see much money come back to the county. So this is our time to actually pull as much as we can for the county. As far as law, our lawsuit goes, yes, Purdue has declared bankruptcy. We have hired a gentleman, a gentleman by the name of David Moulton of Brown Rudnick to represent our constituent, our, our group, our contingent, in the bankruptcy case. We don't know how that's gonna play out now. A bankruptcy in a litigation like this is nine to twelve months. So what we're telling everybody is that we're not close-minded to it, we wanna find the way to get the most money to the county. With that being said, if they go into what's called a free-fall bankruptcy, it's just Purdue in bankruptcy. What they have asked to do is to go into a settlement bankruptcy, and the Sackler family individual has asked to put money out as part of that settlement. We don't know what that looks like sitting here today. So for us to advise you that bankruptcy, to opt into one settlement negotiation versus another sitting here today, we simply can't do until we see the hard numbers of what they're gonna give us. We don't have that, and we might not have that information for a few months. However, that does stall the litigation as, as of right now against Purdue. But if you recall, on behalf of the county, we didn't just sue the manufacturers, we sued the distributors as well. And then we later amended to sue the Sackler family too. So those cases go forward. And that's a big thing because of the, our case from the beginning, what we've said is we want the distributors. They have not, they have not filed bankruptcy, and they don't look like they're going to file bankruptcy, bankruptcy. So hopefully, in the next three months, we should have some more information. We do have trial dates coming up, of the, of some groups that are in our contingent, they will be in Ohio. We do not have to opt into any settlement class if we don't want to. We've said from the beginning, we try your case, it will be tried in the federal court in East City in Green County. But that's our choice. We cannot agree to any settlement, whether it's in bankruptcy or otherwise. The one thing I will tell you that the district attorney said too, we do have two members on the actual steering and the negotiating class that are members. We are there, and we are represented by two people on that, um, panel. So we are not, we are not in any bad position to stay on the panel to hear what they have to say. I don't think you make an offer or you make a decision until you hear all aspects of it. With that being said, do you all have any other questions? Well, thank you for having us. We have been in contact with Mr. Lee, and would like to set up a time in the next thirty days to sixty days to come back and talk to you individually in closed session. So we'll get a few dates that works for everybody. So, thank you.
I want to recognize Dr. Goyen, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here representing the EMS exploratory committee, just wanted to give you an update. Um, we are hoping to get on the agenda next month to give you our full recommendation. I can tell you this evening that the recommendation is going to be that Hawkins County Commission go into a joint venture with the Hawkins County EMS. Essentially, what that boils down to is they would maintain their nonprofit status, uh, they would keep operating the same that they are. Um, what the county would be responsible for is if they got to a position that they could not financially sustain their operations, the county would be able to come in and help them out. That's, that's the basic thing. There are more details obviously to it than that, but just wanted to give you that update tonight and, uh, ask Mr. Metz and the Public Safety Committee to put us on the agenda for next month for full recommendations. That does bring up a point, though, that I wanted to throw out tonight because I know some other situations coming up on your agenda. My committee called, called or emailed or texted or all three last week when some information came out, uh, about, uh, the wheel tax and the concern there. And let me say to Mr. Barrett, Mr. Brewer, and several of you that have attended our meetings, we appreciate that. We appreciate you coming, showing interest in giving input. Uh, my committee, the majority of my committee is concerned, uh, tonight with, uh, the possibility of the ten-dollar cut in the wheel tax. Because obviously, if we're going to ask the county to give us a commitment to the EMS, they have to be able to financially support them. Uh, I know you have a decent little rainy day fund right now, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. As a matter of fact, I encourage it and hope you can continue to do it. Let me go on record to say I'm against all taxes. I hate paying taxes. But my concern is if you cut ten dollars off tonight, and the rainy day fund goes away, and you have to raise my property tax, I'm gonna be out a lot more money than I am ten dollars on a vehicle. Please consider that, because what's at stake, two of the most important things that this joint venture could give us are the reopening of the Subornsville unit that we currently don't have. Our recommendations when we went and did our study came out that we probably needed nine trucks on the road twenty-four hours a day to cover Hawkins County. We've got a big county. To get the response time that we need for our citizens, we needed nine trucks. Obviously, we can't afford that, we know that. So our next, uh, look at it was, okay, with six trucks, we're doing pretty good. Well, we're down to five trucks. We only have five trucks on the road twenty-four hours a day. And you take into consideration that Highway seventy and Highway sixty-six closed, the folks down Morseburg, Cross Clench are, are at a disadvantage right now in that situation with response times. We need to get that six truck back up at Subornsville so we can rotate it in there, um, in our rotation. The other concern is we have one truck that has over three hundred thousand miles on it. It's an end of service. It needs to be taken off the road. We have two more that if they're not there yet, they're pretty close in the next few months of being three hundred thousand miles. We're gonna need new ambulances. They're at the point that they can handle taking care of one or two ambulances maybe, but getting a third or that second or third one, they're gonna have to have some help. And that may be where the county has to come in. But the, these are the things that we're gonna lay out to you in more detail next month when we come with our complete recommendations. But I just want you to be aware of that situation, and, uh, I appreciate each and every one of you all. I've, I've been there on, uh, government city council before, and I know the stress that y'all are under with decisions that you gotta make. And, uh, just pray that, good Lord, that I pray for y'all every day. Hope that you make the right decisions, and I do appreciate you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May I, may I address Mr. Jones, just, I'm gonna make sorry, I'm sorry. I, I respect what you have to say, Mr. Jones, and I know you're a very smart individual. And I considered all of that when, when we were talking about, you know, I attended a lot of the meetings. And what I think we need to do on the ten dollars, let's do what we said we was gonna do when we, when we done the wheel tax. They were supposed to be ten dollars, that's set aside for public safety. Public safety, last year, we had sixteen thousand dollars left over after we paid the contributions. So that was all the extra that we were gonna have. Let's, let's set that ten dollars aside like we said we was gonna set it aside, and we'll have five hundred thousand dollars to go toward that. And then let's do our contributions like we'd always done in the past.
Mr. Chairman, that's false. That's, that's all.
Can we go with the base?
We don't want to disseminate false information, that's false.
Was it for discussion?
Well, that's a, that's a resolution in the packet, and we really need to discuss if we wanna get to, if we wanna go that deep into it. It'd be better if we just wait till we get to a resolution. Alright. Uh, at your desk, you should have a balance sheet and summary financial statement offering from the county mayor's office. Uh, also, uh, Office County Department of Education report their revenue report. And... That's all you should have at your desk. Uh, I need to bring to the full commission the tension with the nine-one-one stuff. Uh, the county has approved a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and the mayor still hasn't signed this contract. Uh, got in contact with the state, and they said it don't matter if we, if the mayor signs the contract, it's not long before we got done with seventy-five thousand dollars. So I just wanted to make the full commission aware of that. And anybody got anything else, recognitions or commendations? If not, we'll move on down and take a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Fields.
Second.
Second by... Motion by, motion by Commissioner Metz, second by Commissioner Board. Any discussion?
What do you ask, what I've said?
Alright, we'll move on then to resolutions. Uh, Resolution twenty nineteen oh nine oh one, introduced by myself and Charlie Thacker, so I'll get him reading.
To the Honorable Michael Harrell, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session, met this twenty-third day of September two thousand nineteen. Resolution in reference to appointment of Rick Brewer as Chairman of County Commission. Whereas the Chairman of the Hawkins County Commission is now due for a form, and whereas Rick Brewer, seventh district Hawkins County, is qualified as Mayor of Bean Station for almost ten years. Mr. Brewer presided over a hundred, uh, regular, uh, VMA meetings and a hundred workshop meetings. Therefore, be it resolved that Brewer, seven districts, uh, County Commission be approved as Chairman of the County Commission. With term, uh, being, uh, from September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen until the fourth Monday of, uh, September two thousand twenty. Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
We need that. Before you do that, we need to change it, seven districts to sixty. That's a mistake.
Mr. Chairman, before we, before we get...
Forward, say. It says, he's got, it's on the twice, seven.
Mr. Chairman, don't we need to put the resolutions one and two again?
Yes.
Hand three and four to him before we get to four.
Yeah, four, I'll take it. Uh, Resolution twenty nineteen oh nine oh two, uh, introduced by Mark DeWitt and Tom Kern.
To the Honorable Michael Jacob Harrell, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session, met this twenty-third day of September two thousand nineteen. Resolution in reference to appointment of Chair of Hawkins County Commission, Keith Gibson. Whereas the office of Chairman of the Hawkins County Commission is due to be filled, and whereas County Mayor Jim Lee has opted not to assume the chair position as his option given in TCA Section five five one oh three. And whereas Commissioner Keith Gibson has the qualification and the willingness to carry out the duties of this office, now therefore be it resolved that Keith Gibson be appointed the Chairman of the Hawkins County Commission, beginning September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, until the fourth Monday in September two thousand twenty. Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
Okay, so, that's, uh, any more nominations for the Chairman seat?
I'll make a motion, nomination seats, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry, Donna. Okay, uh, motions nominated seats. Uh, what we done last time, uh, what do you each person, five minutes to speak, and... And I guess with this going... Three minutes is fine, but I mean, they're feeling the Chairman seat for the commission, so if they won't speak longer than five minutes, I think it'll be fine. They don't have to, but... I mean, it's up to y'all, y'all wanna do three minutes or five, y'all may have a minute.
I don't need three minutes, I just, I think everybody knows me, knows who I am. I'm former mayor of Bean Station. I feel like I'm qualified as far as presiding over the meetings. Uh, I ask you for your support tonight, and if you can't support me tonight, and if I am elected or selected as a chairman, I do need to support more of them. And I appreciate each and everybody's concern. Uh, I, I, it would be an honor and a privilege if you select me, and I hope we all can come together and work together, and I appreciate each and every one of you.
Commissioner Gibson.
I appreciate this opportunity. Uh, not, I've only served this one year. A little bit about myself, I'm a product of the Hawkins County School System, graduated nineteen seventy-three from Churchill, I was fortunate, I had an athletic scholarship on Virginia Tech. Played a little sports up there, uh, came back, went to work at Churchill High School for a year, they would consolidate volunteers, so stayed there for about twelve years, total in Hawkins County. Went to Solon County, ended up spending my last eighteen years in high school administration, dealing with a whole lot of problems. You know, we had to do, do it with parents, students, teachers, sometimes they didn't make nobody happy that day. I have served, been elected three times as an alderman in the city of Churchill. Uh, held meetings, uh, I have been, you know, through the Churchill J.C.s, went a long time ago, of course, after thirty-five, you, you come out of the J.C., but I've served as president for a couple terms in that. I've had a lot of experiences, I appreciate you both. I've had some people ask me questions about committees, that seemed to be a big thing, and, and my answer to them, that the mayor appoints committees, I make no promises except for one thing, to be fired and do the best job I can do. Like Rick said, you know, whoever's elected, we need to stay together as, as, as the County Commission, don't let personalities get involved in this. We need to do what's the best thing we can do for this county, and again, I would appreciate your support.
Now, what we're gonna do, we're gonna do it for a roll call. If we don't select the Chairman the first time, we'll vote again. And then, we still don't... If we don't select the... We'll put it off next month, y'all stuck to me for thirty minutes.
Yes, question.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
You mentioned that the mayor appoints the committees.
Is that not what we did, voted on last time?
I thought the last time we voted that he would not be appointed. He is appointed.
About how you voted, Chris.
I think it was a concern for different people about the Chairman appointing committees, so we voted. From my recollection, we voted to let the mayor appoint the committee. Now, he may, he may talk for the chair, but I think ultimately, it goes to the mayor. That's what I, that's my impression.
Any, any more discussion before we get into the vote? If not, uh, as your names go, this say Commissioner Brewer, Commissioner Gibson, whichever one you wanna vote for, and then we'll go from there.
Charles Thacker. Larry Clontz.
Commissioner Gibson.
Sybil Von Trent. Donnie Townley. Rick Brewer. George Fridwell.
Keith Gibson.
Valerie Goins. Tom Kern. Bob Edens. Mark DeWitt. Raymond Jesse. Dawson Fields. Nancy Barker. Mike Harrell. Jeff Barrett. Hannah Speaks. Keith Gibson. Charles Housewright. Danny Alvis. John Metz. Linda Davis. Commissioner Brewer. Commissioner Brewer.
If I can do it from here, I'm fine, it's right here. Are we ready to proceed? I'd like to recognize, uh, Commissioner DeWitt, uh, on the Resolution oh nine oh three.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session, met this twenty-third day of September two thousand nineteen. Resolution in reference to appointment of Chair Pro Tem of Hawkins County Commission, John C. Metz. Whereas the office of Chairman Pro Tem of the Hawkins County Commission is due to be filled, and whereas Commissioner John C. Metz has the qualifications to carry out the duties of this office and has been doing so, now this will be resolved that John C. Metz be appointed as Chair Pro Tem of the Hawkins County Commission, beginning September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, until the fourth Monday in September two thousand twenty. Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
Recognize Mr. Commissioner Harrell.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session, met this twenty-third day of September two thousand nineteen. Resolution in reference to appointment of Commissioner, Chairman Pro Tem of County Commission, whereas the... Whereas the office of Chairman Pro Tem of Hawkins County Commission is due to be filled. As granted, the county official certified ranking program Commissioner Jeff Barrett has the qualifications to carry out the duties of this office. Therefore be it resolved that Jeff Barrett be appointed as Chairman Pro Tem of Hawkins County Commission. Again, September twenty-third, twenty nineteen until the fourth Monday in September twenty twenty, I so move.
Is there anybody got any comments before we, or we want to hear at least candidates, want to hear these candidates?
I asked any of the nominations.
Is there any other nominations from the floor?
Mister Chairman, could I, uh, leave that we hold off on closing out, uh, those nominations until the two nominees have opportunity to speak?
Yes.
If I may, so they don't want either one.
Okay, we won't, we'll just go ahead and let you all speak right now.
Give you a second, I'll just.
Mister. Mister Metz. Mister Metz, since yours was the first resolution, you want to speak first, please? You have the floor.
Um, naturally, I serve as a public servant. And that's first and foremost, it serves the pleasure of my district and at this commit, uh, on behalf of this commission, it's your pleasure. Uh, the pro tem really has no value whatsoever. Has the ten years that I've been here, the pro tem has never, uh, I don't believe has ever presided over a meeting. And I think we can all agree that everything we do, we try and do it to where there's value in it. So, with that said, and, uh, a conversation that I had with my daughter comes to mind. Uh, and the empowerment of women. And, uh, I would actually consider it an honor to nominate the first female pro tem of Hawkins County Commission if Ms. Hannah Speaks would accept. And I will withdraw my nomination if she will accept.
Uh, thank you, I'll accept that.
Give me a second on that nomination.
I second it.
You don't need a second.
Okay, Mister Brewer, I guess you have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Brewer. Uh, I'm in my third term as Commissioner. Um, went to Churchill High School, graduated nineteen seventy-six. Uh, furthered my education, I have a degree in banking and finance. And I've been, well, like I said, I've been a commissioner for third term. Uh, I've been on the beer board, audit committee, personnel committee, budget committee, uh, parks committee. Most of the committees I've been on at one time or another. Uh, I served on the camp board for a girls' camp down in Mont Eagle, Tennessee, that I've been on for probably fifteen years. You know, I took the people and it's an honor to be on this commission. And like Commissioner Correll pointed out, I have furthered my educational opportunities. And went and enrolled for the Certified Public Communistator Course. Uh, I finished that, took, took me a year and a half to get that certification. Um, in order for me to keep that certification current, I have to take sixteen hours of continually educational credits per year. Uh, a new commissioner type thing. Uh, or required, I think, to have twelve, but I have to have sixteen. But, uh, you know, either way, I pledge conscience and I appreciate your support and good luck to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Brewer, who speaks?
Well, I'm early life speechless. Um, so I wasn't really prepared to say anything. I appreciate the nomination and, um. As with anything, um, in, in the event that it's needed, I'll definitely, uh, do my best. Um, I will say that, um, the last year has been one of the most eye awa- eye-opening experiences of my professional career. Serving on this commission and not all that's good, I'll guess, but, um, I, I appreciate the nomination.
Thank you, Miss Speaks. Is there any more nominations?
Make the motion, nomination seats.
Motion and second, nomination seats, who second that motion? Mister Fields made the motion, Miss Barker second. Uh. Any discussion? If not, uh, voice vote, all in favor will say aye. Hopes likewise. Nomination seats, uh, is there any other discussion before we vote? If not, Madam Clerk, you can call her up.
Commissioner Towley.
Mary. Mary.
Commissioner Fields.
Speaks.
Larry Quants.
Commissioner Barrett.
Mark DeWitt.
Commissioner speaks.
Hannah Speaks.
Speaks.
Raymond Jesse.
Brewer.
Charles Thacker.
Brewer.
Rick Brewer.
Brewer.
Sybil Von Trent.
Commissioner Barrett.
Keith Gibson.
Speaks.
Linda Davis.
Barrett.
Danny Alvis.
Commissioner Brewer.
John Metz.
Commissioner speaks.
Jeff Barrett.
Barrett.
Tom Kern.
Speaks.
Bob Edens.
Speaks.
Charles Housewright.
Brewer.
George Fridwell.
Commissioner Brewer.
Mike Correll.
Brewer.
Valerie Goins.
Speaks.
Nancy Barker.
Speaks.
Twelve for Barrett.
Congratulations, Mister Brewer.
Thank you, I appreciate your support.
Six items on agenda is resolution zero nine zero five, the chair recognizes Mister Metz.
Honorable Chairman, Rick Brewer, members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session met this twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen. Resolution to rescind resolution twenty eighteen ten oh one, oh two, oh three, oh four, and oh five. That confirmed four-year committee term appointments by committees established or made optional by general law or private acts. Whereas the committees listed below are committees established or made optional by general law or private acts. And whereas the county mayor and Hawkins County legislative body feel imperative to rename committee membership in an effort to ensure increased knowledge and experience of commissioners in preparation of a legislative body membership reduction in twenty twenty-two. And whereas the affected committees listed below contain the corresponding resolutions for consideration to rescind. Resolution twenty eighteen oh one, beer board committee, oh two, audit committee, oh three, money with tax committee, oh four, environmental park committee, oh five, ethics committee. Therefore be it resolved that the aforementioned resolutions that establish four-year terms for listed committees be rescinded. But allowing committee members named in said resolutions to continue serving in their respective capacities until which time new committee members are presented to the legislative body for confirmation, Mister Chairman, I so move.
Motion is second by Miss Barker, uh, is there any discussion? Mister Barrett, chair recognizes Mister Barrett.
Thank you, Mister Brewer. Uh, Commissioner Metz, in going over the resolutions, uh, you go through your resolution one through five. And then in a upcoming resolution, I believe you picked up with resolution number eight. Uh, I'm curious as to why resolution number six from a year ago was left off. Which, resolution number six, uh, was, uh, pertains to the Boy Health Insurance Committee.
Because if you'll go back to that resolution, that's for a two-year appointment. And the intent of that, and when we initially established that, which it is a standing committee. Which is not either of these two committee, uh, subjects that have been put forth in this resolution. So next year, you will be voting on new committee members for the Health Insurance Committee, and there is a very valid reason for doing that, and it's continuity.
Okay, I've, I've got one other thing, Mister Brewer. Thank you.
Mister Brewer?
Uh, my button won't work, so whereas chairman ain't got reprogrammed yet, so I have raised my hands. Uh, we set it up for the county mayor to appoint these, uh, committees. I'd like to make a motion to put it back to the chairman.
Mo- restate your motion.
The chairman will have full responsibility selecting the committees.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Who was, who's, who was the second?
Al.
Motion is second, discussion? Yeah, I'm sorry, here, we've already, we got, we got to take care of the motions on the floor of Mister Brewer.
Uh, Dan, Rick, nineteen.
Commissioner Brewer. Chairman Brewer.
Yes.
I had two points to my question. If, if I can, I'd like to finish the second part of the.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, uh, the second part that I had, I wanted to make an amendment to that resolution. Yeah, uh, the part that I would like to amend is down at the bottom there, of course, it says, until which time new committee members are presented to the legislative body for confirmation. I would like to strike that and make an amendment to that resolution, that those committees' appointments be presented at the next regularly scheduled county commission meeting in October.
Madam Clerk, do you have that amendment?
He would like to strike until which time new committee members are presented to the legislative body for confirmation and replace it with.
The next regularly scheduled meeting in October.
And I'll second that since that was actually intended.
Motion made and second to amend this resolution. And do we need, does everybody understand what the amendment is, or do you want the clerk to read that again? Madam Clerk, would you read that amendment again?
We will strike until which time new committee members are presented to the legislative body for confirmation and replace with uh, in their respective capacities until the next regularly scheduled meeting in October.
Okay, is there any discussion on the amendment? If not, we'll do a voice voting.
While we're amending that, do we need to change the four-year term to three years, since there's only three years left in this term?
No, you're rescinding the four years.
Let's vote on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, say aye. Hopes likewise. Motion carries. For the amendment, now let's vote on the resolution as.
Commissioner Thacker, is that correct?
Hey, Rick, you can't, you, you're gonna have to do it on.
We have to do it on the board.
We have to do it on the board?
I voted for the minutes, I have to go.
All right, I just thought it'd be quicker, not, we have to, we have to. You want to go back and do it on the board, or we go okay with that, we had one another vote? Are we good with that vote, or we need to go ahead and put it on the board?
Put it on the board.
Okay, everybody vote on the.
Yes, forty men, no yes.
Let's just, we'll just take this one like that, everything else is, needs to be.
We vote on the resolution as amended. Uh, is there any discussion on the resolution as amended? If not, everybody cash to vote.
We have eighteen yes, three no.
All right, motion carries. Uh, resolution oh nine oh six, Mister Metz.
Hey, hang on, I, I have a motion on the floor.
Mister, Mister Correll, I'm sorry, go ahead and restate your motion.
Uh, give the chairman, the chairman, if he want, picks the committees. Instead of the mayor.
Is there a second?
Uh, Commissioner Alvis had seconded that earlier.
Okay. Motion.
I got him, I got him, you might come down here. They might put a leash on you.
We got a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this motion, Mister Metz?
So last year, we made a motion to amend resolution, uh, twenty eighteen oh nine oh one. And the nineteen ninety-two local rules to have the county mayor select committees for the county commission. So now we're gonna go back to the way it was before, because a few don't like the way things are done, so they're gonna take the ball and go home. Real professional, we're, we're, we're out for a fine year, fellow commissioners.
Hannah Speaks.
Mister Brewer?
We've had committee meetings, and the mayor has showed up to some of them, some of them, he hadn't. So I mean, if we are not gonna have a mayor that's gonna support us in the committees, we should be doing this, there's, we ought to be doing this all ourselves. As he said once before, it's our commission, not his, and we ought to be doing it.
Mister Clones?
I just don't blame the change in the rules every few days. I, 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 Union Officer, we had a body that wanted to change the rules, every time we had a meeting. We either have a rule or we don't have a rule, and I'm not gonna change them, but just be changing. There's no way to run a commission.
Mister Fields?
I guess my only concern is no matter who we decide is gonna do it, the mayor or chairman. Is there some way we could put this decision, we lay board with the committee, that it's not just one person? You know, putting these people where this one person wants them to go, that can actually go, and the chairman or the mayor, and one can be inserted into a certain committee, whether it be personnel or whatever. whether it be personnel or whatever, to help make this decision on who's going to what boards? This is question, not, you know, even thinking about it. Instead of putting it all in one person's hand, you know? But we are twenty-one, we are, we are a governing body, not a, not a governing eye, so.
I can amend my amendment to let, throw a stamp in the chairman's.
I just, like I said, just a question, and nobody might not even, might even better agree with us.
Commissioner, since the.
Mr. Houseright has the floor.
He posed a question.
Does somebody have a question, or does, does somebody have it?
I can change my amendment to throw a stamp in the chairman's.
It don't matter, I said, I'm just curious about what it thought.
And if you're posing a question, are we allowed to answer the question? I'll answer the question. The citizens of Hawkins County selected Mayor Lee as CEO of government body of Hawkins County. In any organization, that individual is solely responsible to determine how his team functions. And if it's bad, if they don't do a good job, guess what? The shareholders, the residents of Hawkins County get rid of it. That's the way the game works. That's how it's supposed to work. That's the way the founding fathers established this. That's the way that it was established in nineteen eighty-two due to these regs, because I don't think that they really thought that the county mayor would relinquish chair position. So there's a reason for this. Now, we want to throw out the baby with the bathwater just because it's a personal vendetta. Go ahead and do it. It's not gonna change my life one bit. It's not gonna change anybody in here's life one bit. Except for the residents of Hawkins County that's paying the taxes to keep you on a job to begin with. I don't know if that answered.
Hey, if you're doing like that, just follow I, I don't give a shit.
Mr. Houseright?
Got a question for the, Mr. Phillips. When we was at a class when we first started C tasking, and I researched a little bit, and what Commissioner Metz said, I think in the eighties, commissioners were getting voted on something about the laws, maybe like the mayor should have the power. Because I believe my question, even having jumped, and I believe that was saying it the way you interpreted, the way I took it, that the mayor should have the power to pull the committees. When we was in that volunteer class through C.
Well, it's, it's actually up to the commissioners. What I said at the time when that came up was that the chairman would, unless the commissioners appointed the mayor to do it. And that's what you all did. It, so it's optional of the, of the commission, as to what they want to do in that regard.
Each year, when it revolves with the chairmanship, correct?
Well, but the commissioners can still decide, because, you know, going with the county mayor is the chairman, and that's not an issue. But in this case, it isn't, so it's up to the commissioners to decide how they want to resolve it.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Back?
Mr. Chairman, I call for questions.
Question's been called for, is any objections to the question? If not, we'll vote on the motion.
Did you, Peter, could clarify the motion for everyone?
Clarify the motion, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to put committee appointments at the full responsibility of the chairman. Is that correct?
Can, can I, I throw a stamp to that, so I believe we got to do it.
May I ask a question? Question's been called for. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Sure will.
Yes, for, oh, yes.
All vote on the board.
No, we're gonna.
You want to do a roll call?
We'll call the roll. Mr. Alvis?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Evans?
No.
Linda Davis?
No.
Valerie Goins?
No.
Michael Rel?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
No.
Nancy Barker?
No.
Jeff Barrett?
Upstaying.
Keith Gibson?
No.
Sybil Von Trent?
Yes.
John Metz?
No.
George Bridwell?
No.
Anna Spinks?
Yes.
Raymond Jesse?
Yes.
Donnie Tally?
Yes.
Charles Houseright?
No.
Larry Fonce?
No.
Dawson Fields?
No.
Charlie Thacker?
No.
Mark DeWitt?
No.
Rick Brewer?
Substant.
Thirteen no. Six yes.
Motion fails. Move on to the next resolution. I'm sorry. Vote on the resolution as amended. Oh nine oh six. On the board. We, we voted on the motion. The motion failed, amendment passed. That is a different motion, I don't know why we weren't voting on it before we did others. We should have told you that resolution before we did the motion. Let's vote, let's vote on oh nine oh six resolution as amended. I'm sorry, oh nine oh five. Let that over, Mr. Metz, Madam Clerk.
We have not voted on the amendment made by Commissioner Barrett, which was to strike.
We did vote on it, right?
We did, we did pass that, we passed that by a voice vote, so I guess we'll have to vote on the full.
Resolution as amended.
So we may have to do that by voice vote. My suggestion for the commission is, please, before we jump ahead, let's take time, slow down, so we get these things in the correct order. Because it will be a nightmare to read these minutes.
That motion should have waited until after this resolution was passed or, or rejected. Everybody vote on the board.
Holy Christ. We are voting on resolution twenty nineteen oh nine oh five as amended. The amendment's urgent is to strike until which time new committee members are presented to the legislative body for confirmation and have him to replace the next, the next regularly scheduled meeting in October. That is what was voted on, that's what passed, now we're voting on the full, uh, resolution.
Another word, President, amendment for a term until next meeting.
Yes.
All right, are we voting on the board?
No, we are, we are past that, because we have so many amendments.
Okay.
We're voting on the.
Roll call.
Resolution of twenty nineteen oh nine oh five.
Yes, for, oh, yes.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Yes, is, four's number twenty nineteen oh nine oh five, no is against. Sybil Von Trent?
We have voted for it once, yes.
Charles Thacker?
No.
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Michael Rel?
Yes.
Jeff Barrett?
Yes.
John Metz?
Oh, yes.
Dawson Fields?
Yes.
Donnie Tally?
Yes.
Valerie Goins?
Well, I thought I heard of him. I suppose I heard, yes.
Raymond Jesse?
Yes.
Larry Fonce?
Yes.
Linda Davis?
Yes.
George Bridwell?
Yes.
Anna Spinks, yeah. Bob Evans?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
Yes.
Danny Alvis?
No.
Keith Gibson?
Yes.
Rick Brewer?
Yes.
Mark DeWitt? Charles Houseright?
Yes.
Now, let's move on to resolution oh nine oh six, Mr. Metz, you recognize.
Chairman, to the honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman, members of Hawkins County Board of Commission in regular session, that is twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen, resolution reference to receiving resolution twenty eighteen ten oh eight point four, your committee term appointments for internal committees, whereas internal committees of the county legislative body have no statutory requirements associated with them, are created according to the will of the county legislative body, and it is so we can make recommendations of the full county legislative body, and whereas the county mayor and Hawkins County legislative body wishes to ensure fluid and progressive improvements by internal committee shifts throughout the first terms of office. And whereas the internal committees confirm, done a resolution twenty eighteen ten oh eight, were more effectively known as airport budget, finance, education, industrial, personnel, public building, public safety, roads, solid waste, recycling. Therefore, be it resolved that resolution twenty eighteen ten oh eight, which pointed four-year terms for the above broken internal committees be rescinded, allowing committee members to continue serving in their respective capacity, until which time new internal committees are presented to the legislative body for confirmation, Mr. Chairman, I will move.
Motion by Mr. Metz, second, by Mr. Gibson. Uh, Mr. Phillips, you recognize?
This is what I was asking a little ago, about do we need to change that for you?
Mr. Brewer?
I'll go after Burr.
Mr. Burr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to amend this resolution, just like I did the one in front of this one, that the committee appointments be presented back to the full county commission at the next scheduled meeting in October.
Motion to amend this resolution by Mr. Burr, second, by Mr. Metz on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Are we voting on the board on the amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Brewer, do you still wish to speak?
I will have the motion.
We're voting on the amendment?
Yes.
On the board?
Yes, sir.
All right, everybody cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Amendment carries. Now we go back to the original resolution as amended, is there any discussion on that?
Yes, I've got a question.
Mr. Brewer?
I've done some research, and I cannot find anywhere where it says that every committee is supposed to have, uh, somebody off that district on that committee. Is that somewhere I'm missing, or does anybody know, or?
There, there is no set of qualifications, statutory requirement for it, the district committee can be an individual at large, the way it operates, is that correct?
That's correct, it's up to the.
It doesn't even have to be a committee.
Yeah, it's up to the performance, to how they want.
Well, with that said, I'd like to make a motion that each committee has one person per district on that committee.
Are you, are you amending this resolution as amended? Is that your motion to amend?
I want to amend the main resolution.
Okay, is there a second?
If you do justice, amend justice resolution, you're gonna amend the committee.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Back. Madam Clerk, would you read the amendment?
I'm not sure that I can. I'll do my best. Just that, let's see. The committee appointments will include one district from the district. Is that correct?
Everybody understand that? Okay, well, is there any discussion on the amendment? If, if there's no discussion on the amendment, I'm sorry.
She won't, everything ain't working.
We can't, we can't let her in here, because we don't have.
Commissioner Trent, do you wish to speak?
Just a moment, please. I have one question. Why would you not want a commissioner from each district? That used to be considered taxation without representation.
Thank you, Ms. Trent. Mr., Mr. DeWitt?
I'm still stuck on, why are we doing that on this resolution only? When the resolution before that listed other committees, beer board audit, bill of rights, environmental parks committee, and ethics committee.
Well, ethics, you can actually.
Ethics, I understand.
Okay.
But the other ones, we didn't amend that one to say one represented from each district.
Well, that, that resolution's so great. I mean, we was all confused what we amended, and what, I mean, I would have done it on that and do it. I can rescind that, that resolution to do it, if that's what you want to do, it don't matter to me.
I, I personally wouldn't make, if, if you want to do this logically, I personally wouldn't amend this resolution. I would vote on this resolution and then make, make a separate motion. That's just me.
Motion to amend, the amendment has been made, second, is there any other discussion on the amendment? If not.
Uh, we doing a roll call, we doing?
On the board. Everybody cast your vote.
Eighteen yes, two no, one abstain.
Okay, amendment carries. Now we ready to vote? Are we having more discussion on the amended resolution as amended? If, if there's no discussion, are we voting on the board? Everybody cast your vote. Madam Clerk, would you clarify what, what we're voting on?
Chairman Brewer, we are voting on the full resolution twenty nineteen oh nine oh six. The previous vote, which was eighteen, yes, two and a half. Chairman Brewer, we are voting on the full Resolution twenty nineteen oh nine oh six, the previous vote, which was eighteen, yes, two no, one abstain, was on the amendment made by Commissioner Rale and seconded by Commissioner Thatcher. This is, this is as amended, this is amended as amended.
Okay, does everybody understand, cast your vote.
Nineteen yes, two no.
Okay. We have order. Next resolution is oh nine oh seven, I would just ask, uh, that, that is one that I sponsored, and as chairman, somebody else is going to need to read that, I guess, if, if you want to introduce it, I give anybody permission to read that, or?
Mr. Chairman, you can do it, no one else will.
Mr. Fields.
True elected member.
Okay. I, I will read it, and, you know, uh, we're talking about resolution in reference to the approval and reduction of the wheel tax by ten dollars from the thirty dollars, uh, going to the undesignated general fund beginning June first, twenty twenty. Whereas on June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, approval was given to raise the wheel tax amount via motion to reconsider resolution two zero one seven oh six oh eight, second reading by forty dollars, with thirty dollars of the increase going to the general fund and ten dollars to the public safety reserve as defined. And whereas beginning June first, twenty twenty, this thirty dollar portion of wheel tax collection is to be reduced by ten dollars, reducing the amount of the general fund to twenty dollars. Now, therefore, be it resolved that approval be given to reduce the wheel tax amount by ten dollars, and upon passage of second reading, and beginning June first, twenty twenty, the total amount of wheel tax collected will be fifty-seven dollars. And I guess, uh, am I allowed to make that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I so moved. Mr. Thatcher, second. Discussion, Mr. Clance.
I'm going to vote down this resolution, and I want to state the reason why. A ten dollar cut is approximately, I understand, five hundred thousand dollar cut in revenue. Uh, you've heard, uh, Mr. Blaine Jones state the condition of the rescue squad, so I won't go over that. Two, our fire departments, according to article in the Roger Review lately, states that most of the equipment is outdated and personal care, used to cost fifteen hundred dollars, now costs ten thousand dollars. If we don't keep those fire departments going, your personal property income tax, uh, is going to go up on your home and stuff. The sheriff's department has lost seventy-four employees in the last twenty-four months, uh, because of low starting wages. Uh, the sewer line that comes from the sheriff's department has to be, uh, put a screen in, and we don't know what that's going to cost, we've had estimates for fifty thousand, six hundred thousand. Uh, our county-owned buildings, a lot of them need repair, if you don't believe it, just go to the local library and look at the, uh, sunroom, it's rotting down. Our education, we took some money from the education fund in the last couple of years, and, and they were told recently by the budget committee that they didn't have money to, to re-put that in their budget. The general office has for eighteen thousand dollars to monitor prisoners on probation, uh, the state was paying all that, two hundred dollars to monitor those monitors, and, uh, now we have been asked, the county has been asked to pay one hundred dollars, the, the budget committee voted not to do that. Uh, to keep those prisoners in jail costs a thousand, twelve hundred dollars a month, instead of paying one hundred dollars per, uh, inmate. Uh, our industrial board operates on a very legitimate budget, and we cut that a hundred dollars on, on the maintenance up there. Industrial board is, is in charge of all the maintenance up there, not just recruiting, and, and Larry Yelkins, uh, who's on the industrial board, said that, that times he took, uh, people out to eat from, uh, South Korea and China, and didn't have enough money to pay the dinner, and he had to take it out of his pocket. That we have just too many unknowns, uh, to go cut this budget just this time. I, I feel like a, a no vote tonight is a no vote on property tax increases in two years down the line. Uh, however, uh, a couple of years down the road, I probably might support a, a, a tax relief, uh, for those that qualify for property tax relief. Uh, I urge my fellow commissioners that to vote no.
Mr. Fields. I'm sorry about Mr. Skowens.
I want to say that I agree with everything Larry said, he said a lot of things that I would have said. I wanted to also say that we worked on this budget day in, day out, we felt like we had a good budget, um, our deficit at the end, I think, was around eight thousand dollars, and I think now it actually came out a little better than that. If we take this ten dollars away, as he said, it's five hundred thousand dollars we go in the hole. I feel that at this point in time, we don't know what our revenue's going to be next year, in June, our revenues could be less than we anticipated, because we could go into recession, gas prices encouraged over the last week. We don't know what we're headed for. I want you as constituents to know that I don't like paying a ten, that extra ten dollars, you do on my vehicles. But at this point in time, we've got to look at what's better for our county and for the members of our county, because we do need all of these services, and we have to take those tax dollars to pay for those services. Maybe we can look at this again when we do the budget next year, and see if our rainy day fund is large enough, because our rainy day fund is supposed to be, I think, around thirty-two percent, that's ideal. We're around that now, so I feel that we need to keep our rainy day fund where we're at. We don't want to be operating in the negative like we were a couple of years ago, thank you.
Mr. Fields.
First of all, I'll say that I stood until the end for the, against the wheel tax, I, I voted down every time against the wheel tax. But Dr. Jones stated a while ago, and once they bring back what they're going to bring to us in recommendations, we may end up having to put some money into an EMX. Uh, Commissioner Clance, I mean, we've got so many things that we don't know what's going to cost anything yet, do cover anything, uh, or, or is it, yes, and Valerie hit on it too. It ends up to me, we pull this resolution, uh, or table it, whichever we want to do, and wait till we get some answers on some other stuff. You know, it may be that we can do this after, like Mr. Clance said, after we find out what some other stuff will cost. If I put that forward motion, I will, you know, I'll make a motion that we pull the resolution.
You make a motion to table it, or I will. Let me, let me, let me just say this, let me just say this.
Chairman, Chairman, hold on just a second, as Chairman, you cannot debate this resolution.
I'm not debating, you're Mexican, Matt, I have the floor, okay? Uh, I'm not debating, let me just say this, we'll just go ahead and pull it, then we don't have to vote on table.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table it. Okay, okay.
So this, this resolution, twenty nineteen oh nine, seven is pulled, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak a little bit further? Mr. Martin, you got, what do you need to talk about?
I just want to, I just want to say, uh, it's about the wheel tax, I just like.
We've done, we've done, we've done already, we've solved the wheel tax, it's not on debate, we're not talking about the wheel tax anymore, we're moving on to the next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. By the way, you have to realize you work for me, not, I don't work for you.
Mr. Martin, as, as Chairman of this county commission, I will not tolerate any personal vendettas from you to any one of these commissioners like you have in the past. Thank you. We move on, Resolution oh nine oh eight, by Commissioner Rale. Mr. Rale, you recognize.
Okay, to the Honorable Chairman, to the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman, and the members of Hawkins County Board of Commission, a resolution made the twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen. Resolution in reference to increasing, increase the contribution fund for all fire departments in Hawkins County that are currently receiving contribution funds from the general fund. Whereas all Hawkins County fire departments currently express a need for additional funding for various reasons such as fire apparatus, repair equipment, that update, replacement, turnout gear, bunker gear, gram share, matching money, so on. Hawkins County Fire Department has response to a total eleven hundred and ten calls for service between January first, twenty nineteen, and September first, twenty nineteen, this also includes the city departments. Whereas in twenty eighteen, Hawkins County dedicated ten dollars of the previous tax wheel tax to be used as a dedicated revenue stream for public safety funds, and/or purchase Hawkins County fire departments. Hawkins County fire departments are eligible to be funded from this reserve, which is currently assigned in an undesignated fund balance of general fund one oh one. Therefore, being resolved, be it resolved that each Hawkins County fire department, twelve departments currently receiving a contribution from Hawkins County, including the city departments, receive an increase of four thousand dollars per department for the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty of year. Further being resolved, that said additional funding will come from the public safety reserve within the unassigned fund balance of the general fund one oh one. This resolution is only to increase the fire department's funding level of twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty-year budget with the option to be added to the fire department's budget request for future budgets. The contract for the Churchill Fire Department to provide fire coverage to those being industrial park will not change. Total amount of increase, which will be amended from the general fund unassigned fund balance due to fire department's contribution, would be forty-eight thousand dollars, I so moved.
Motion by Mr. Rale, second, by Mr. Alice, and Mr. Fields.
Uh, one question, how does, including the city departments, why are we giving a city, why we don't have a city, does the city get money?
The city's, uh, county tax first, they, so I just say I don't look at it.
And they already don't receive an equal amount.
And, and on top of that, there's a gap in between them, so if they get it, there's going to be a little bit more gap, so it keeps them closer together in a gap.
Mr. Thatcher.
I just, uh, wanted to, uh, ask just one question, this is only for this one year, right?
Yes, sir. To be looked at.
At budget child next year.
Yes, every budget year.
Mr. Metz.
Okay, bear with me, um, I'm assuming this, you intend this to be for capital expenditures?
Yes.
Capital expenditures and improvements on, on capital equipment.
Equipment, bunker.
We have et cetera, so does that mean anything, everything, that's one question. Well, I'm not going to go over everything, but I will say that if you go with forty-eight thousand dollars, you're going to have to pull, uh, twenty, almost twenty thousand dollars from fund balance, because it was not forty-eight thousand dollars in that public safety fund, there's actually twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. That's allocated designated for that particular expenditure. So I, are, are you suggesting that we go ahead and pull twenty, almost twenty-five thousand, well, twenty thousand dollars out of the general fund, keeping in mind that, you know, during the, uh, budget process, that all the motions collectively to cut expenditures was twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. That was point one three percent of all expenditures. Point one three percent of our expenditures, we cut twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, and then now we're going to turn around and spend an extra twenty thousand dollars to dial the general fund for this. Uh, so I don't know if, if that's the intent, is to pull that, that revenue out. Uh, and to go back to what, uh, Commissioner Brewer had said earlier, and I apologize by saying what I said, that it was false, but I guess I intended to say that it wasn't all factual. And that it, it came across as if that money has, that was set aside and is set aside, that it was just spent randomly. It was not, it was allocated towards those nonprofit expenditures, just as they were mandated to be done, in the resolution that was put forward on how those funds would be distributed, in that prior resolution on the wheel tax. So with that funding, go where it, going where it was intended to go by resolution, you've got twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, thirty-three cents in that dedicated fund balance. I've got some other things to do, that's my, that's my primary question, are you saying we're going to pull that, that additional funding out of fund balance?
Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, this ten dollars that's going public safety, isn't it in the assigned, unassigned fund balance?
No, sir, it's, it's not, it is assigned, if you go, I believe it's page nineteen, and you look under where it said, I can't remember the actual verdict, but it's on over for, for a sign, what's the verdict on that sign?
Less restricted committed or assigned funds set aside for specific purposes.
It's set aside in there, and also if you look at your budget on page ten, go to page ten, and it will actually show the funds that were, that funneled into that, it's actually separated into its own category.
Isn't there five point five million unassigned fund balance?
Uh, it's five point eight.
Five point eight, five million. So couldn't we just take liberty there and get the fire department's turn?
Yeah, that's, that's what you all want to do, but.
Yes, that's a big thing to do.
And that, and that's the thing, I mean, I, I had a snot bit out of me, excuse me, excuse that expression, about cut, 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 and the individuals that are so hell bent on reducing the revenue, by the way, that half million dollars is four point five percent of your locally generated revenue, four point five percent. Now, that ninety-three percent that, that we budget, that we're going to collect on property tax, but we actually get ninety-seven percent, that's four percent buffer, you do the wheel tax, that eliminates that. And then, you know, thankfully, the way that we actually build this fund balance is we've got responsible, good office holders that are good stewards of the taxpayers' money, they turn money back in, that's how we're building this fund balance. And with the, the sheriff, that, uh, the board bill, it was two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars under what we anticipated, what if that happens this next year? And, yeah, twenty, twenty thousand dollars, I almost said twenty thousand dollars in, you know, eighteen million dollar expenditures is nothing, but when I say that, in the next budget committee hearing, I'm going to be told pennies makes dollars, and don't scoff over a thousand dollar cut. And I don't, I mean, it's taxpayers' money, we should be responsible, but be logical. Uh, so, you know, if that's what everybody wants to do, and we'll go ahead, uh, when everybody's finished, but I'm going to go ahead and, uh, make some amendments, and, uh, where it states, this. And, uh, where it states, this resolution is only to increase the fire department's funding level for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty fiscal year budgets, with the option to be added to fire department's budget request for future budgets. I would like to add funds to be dispersed upon confirmation that TCA mandated filings are completed. Funds to be dispersed upon confirmation that all TCA mandated finding filings are completed.
Is that your only amendment, Mr. Mads?
My, my, my other amendments really don't matter if you're gonna pull it from the general fund.
I'm glad you got that amendment.
I would like to add additionally that funds be dispersed upon confirmation of TCA mandated filings when they are completed.
Motion made and seconded the amendment.
I second.
Is there discussion on the amendment? If not, are we voting on the board?
Yes.
Everybody cast your vote.
Twenty yes, one no.
Okay, mo, the motion on the amendment carries. Uh, we'll go back to the resolution as amended. Is any further discussion on the resolution as amended?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, well, I'm sorry.
Mr. Fields.
I'm just asking a question. We've got some money supposedly coming in, I think in October, our internet tax, I mean, I'm all for giving the fire departments money, I, I mean, that's not a question, but would it be easier to do in a month? Can we table this now and do it in a month, when we get to find out how much that money's gonna be? Is that reasonable?
I'd rather not.
Okay.
Because it, it, this avalanche of power has been two years in the making, and I was reading it again today, and it's supposed to come online in October.
When I'm talking about money we get from the state for internet tax.
Yeah, well, I thought that, I'm sorry, I was referring.
Everybody's done, been spent so many ways, it, it ain't gonna be nothing.
I think this is a good resolution, uh, put together very well. I support the fire departments, and if that's it, I call for questions.
Question's been called for, is any objections to the question?
All object.
Mr. Mads, objects, we put the question on the board, uh, all in favor, questions can, can vote, can we put it on the board, or do I have to roll call? John. John, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mads, you've been, you was recognized, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I apologize. Uh, in the first paragraph, whereas all Hawkins County Fire Department currently expressing need for additional funding for various reasons such as blah, 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 et cetera, I'd like for you to eliminate that, because I believe it should be capital expenditures. Because that, that's our ultimate goal, right? That's why we push to get the ten dollars set aside, so that that funding would be used. Preferably, it would all be used for grant matching, so that instead of them competing against each other for the same grant, that you could have some cohesive plan to where you could actually, you know, get benefit out of it. So basically, I'm just gonna say we eliminate et cetera, and just be capital expenditures.
I'll say it. So, struck, um, apparatus, repair equipment.
Legally, all of that.
And that, yeah, legally, and so capital expenditures.
And other capital expenditures.
Motion to amend the resolution as amended. And there's a second, is any discussion on this amendment? Are we voting on the board, or roll call? Yes. Are we voting on either on the board or the roll call? We're voting on the amendment.
Second amendment, yes.
Does everybody understand the amendment? Cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Amendment carries. Okay, we're going back to the resolution as amended, as amended. Is there any discussion on that? And I. Question's been called for, is any objection to the question? If not, everybody cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion carries. Next resolution, oh nine oh nine, introduced by Commissioner Davis.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission, regular session met this twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen. Resolution in reference approval to declare the canine of Hawkins County Sheriff's Department surplus property and donate to handler Wesley Seals. Whereas the Hawkins County Sheriff's Office has had a canine named Bach for six, for six plus years. Canine service dogs or one handler dogs are only useful for six to eight years, and whereas Bach has almost reached his maximum service years, the dog handler has been Officer Wesley Seals since the dog became a member of the department, but has now left the department. And whereas Sheriff Ronnie Lawson wishes to retire the canine and donate him, donate him to his handler Officer Seals, as it would be impractical to reassign Bach to a new canine handler, which would have to attend basic handler course before putting him back in service. Therefore, being resolved, approval be given to declare canine Bach as surplus property and donate the dog to his handler Officer Wesley Seals. Further, that in accepting the canine, Officer Seals will sign an agreement with the Hawkins County Sheriff's Office, declaring that he will accept the canine and all liability, as well as the financial responsibility of the dog. Officer Seals will also be prohibited from using the canine in any aspect of law enforcement, neither selling or giving the dog to another law enforcement agency or individual, or an individual. And I so move, Mr. Chairman, I so move, and I would like to amend this to sell for one dollar. I'm gonna ask Mr. Uh, uh, Phillips if he will explain that.
Yes, under the statute, since this is a gift to a private individual, uh, the only way I know that we can do this is by two-thirds vote, so that we can then say that this is less, the value of it is less than one thousand dollars, and we can authorize the, uh, county mayor, or the purchase agent with county mayor, to then sell it to the handler for the sum of one dollar. I think if we can handle it that way, that would meet the statute of, of gift to a private individual.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Thacker. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is not working here.
Mr. Williams.
I would like to propose amendment to the last paragraph, that, uh, lessons there will also be prohibited from using canine in any aspect of law enforcement. Officer Seals has moved to the, uh, Rogersville City Police Department, and I think with two, two useful years at least in, in Bach, that the Rogersville City Police Department should be able to, uh, use the dog with Officer Seals.
Are you making that?
I make that as part of the motion, yes.
I second.
Is a second. Mr. House, right, second. Uh, discussion?
Does that mean we're going to make the donation to the Hawkins City Police Department, or still to Mr. Seals, or did we?
Well, if, if you go, uh, either way, I, I suppose, you know, if, if we're gonna make donations to Officer Seals, we need to strike that line that he can't use it in law enforcement. But if we make the motion, if we make, if we donate the dog to Rogersville City Police Department, then that is effectively the same.
If, if you do that, then what I said is not, that's it.
I'd like to recognize Sheriff Lawson. I'm asking him, Mr. Davis, pull our resolution.
I respectfully pull this resolution.
Resolution's been pulled, moving on. Resolution oh nine ten by Mr. Reed.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in regular session met this twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen. Uh, approval of renewal statutory bond for seventh district constable for term of office beginning September one twenty eighteen and ending August thirty-one twenty twenty-two. Whereas the state of Tennessee requires that certain county public officials hold official statutory bonds in accordance with provision of Title Eight, Chapter nineteen, Tennessee Code, mandated hand, whereas the following bond renewed is required to be approved by the county commission, and duly signed and recorded by the applicable officials before being filed in the county courts clerked office. Elected August second, two thousand eighteen, Constable District Seven, Tony Robinson, eight thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the one-year renewal of statutory bond above official be approved by the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners as required by the Tennessee Code ended. Renewal period is September first twenty nineteen until August thirty-first twenty twenty. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Harrell, any discussion? If not, cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution oh nine eleven. Mr. Mads, recognize.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, regular session met this twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen. Resolution in reference general purpose school fund budget amendment, whereas Hawkins County Board of Education has approved the attached budget amendment to the general purpose school fund, and now request approval of said amendment by Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, now therefore be resolved Hawkins County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session, September twenty-three twenty nineteen, the GO on record as passing this resolution, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Mr. Mads, second by Commissioner Harrell, is there any discussion? If not, cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Resolution carries, oh nine twelve, Mr. Mads, you recognize?
To the Honorable Rick Brewer Chairman and members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, regular session met this twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen, resolution in reference school transportation fund budget amendment, whereas Hawkins County Board of Education has approved the attached budget amendment to the school transportation, transportation fund, and now request approval of said amendment by Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, now therefore be resolved Hawkins County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session, September twenty-three, twenty-three twenty nineteen, the GO on record as passing this resolution, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Mads, second by Commissioner Harrell, is any discussion? Mr. Byron.
I've just got one question for, uh, Superintendent Hickson. There you are. Sorry, there Matt, but you posed. Uh, question I've got about the bus safety incentive bonuses. If a bus driver has a safe driving record, say for five years, he gets an incentive, he gets bonus, okay? If he has, say, for example, a safe driving record for ten years, does he get a proportionate increase, or is it flat, flat?
Good question, but the, uh, motion as passed was for a small incentive per year, so I believe that's a total of a hundred dollars a year maximum, and if we're looking at, uh, paying for him instead of the safe driving paid out in two installments, uh, fall and spring.
Okay.
For that year.
Okay.
So by the ten year, if they've got that every year, that would be equivalent of a hundred, uh, per year for that ten year period, unless it's altered in, in, in the interest.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? If not, cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Next resolution, oh nine thirteen, recognize Mr. Mads.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer Chairman and members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, regular session met this twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen, resolution in reference education capital projects fund budget amendment, whereas Hawkins County Board of Education has approved the attached budget amendment to the education capital projects fund, and now request approval of said amendment by Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, now therefore be resolved Hawkins County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session, September twenty-three twenty nineteen, GO on record as passing this resolution, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Mads, second by Commissioner Harrell, any discussion? If not, cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Resolution carries, next items, electing another public, uh, Fields, I guess you're reading that.
Peril of donor public, Brett Ball per address, One Main Financial, Kingsport, Tennessee, Pamela L. Burns per address, Suffolk Boy Church Hill, Tennessee, Dennis L. Collier per address, Leonardland and Mini Stores, Kingsport, Tennessee, Brooke Coke per address, First Union Bank, Rogersville, Jamie Kirby per address, Kirby Construction, Rogersville, Ashley D. Lawson per address, First Union Bank, Rogersville, Lisa A. Lawson per address, United States Postal Service, Rogersville, Keisha M. Partner per address, Cash Express, Rogersville, James M. Russell per address, Burke Baptist Church, Churchill, Tennessee, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Fields, second by Commissioner Harrell, any discussion? If not, cast your vote. Can we have, uh?
Twenty-one yes.
Let's try to suspend the rule for two hours of resolution.
I'll say.
Motion been made to suspend the rules, uh, second, not Mr. Mads, second by Mr. Fields. Take a vote on that.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion to suspend rules carries, uh. First, have a board resolution be read by Commissioner Mads.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer Chairman and members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, regular session met this twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen, resolution in reference extension of exclusive franchise rights for the operation of ground and convalescent ambulance services for Hawkins County, Tennessee. Whereas following resolutions have been approved by Hawkins County Board of Commissioners for ambulance services in Hawkins County, July twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, resolution twenty sixteen oh seven oh three, granting exclusive franchise rights for the operation of ground and convalescent ambulance service, Hawkins County Emergency Medical Services, and the Churchill Emergency Medical Services for a period of three years, with an expiration of June thirty twenty nineteen, September twenty-six twenty sixteen, resolution number twenty sixteen oh nine oh seven, approval to revoke the exclusive franchise issued Churchill Emergency Medical Services executed by result enclosure of Churchill's Emergency Medical Services effective August twenty-four twenty sixteen due to financial difficulty of. twenty-four, twenty sixteen, due to financial difficulty April twenty-second, twenty nineteen, resolution twenty nineteen oh four oh two, out of order. Approving the formation of EMS exploratory committee charged with advising Hawkins County Board of Commissioners on current potential possibilities related to EMS service providers for the county of Hawkins, May twenty, twenty nineteen, resolution twenty, uh, nineteen oh five oh four, granting an extension of Hawkins County Emergency Medical Service franchise rights for ninety days, making the expiration date September thirty, twenty nineteen. Whereas pending the final recommendation from the EMS exploratory committee, it is recommended that franchise rights for Hawkins County Emergency Medical Services be extended until June thirty, twenty twenty. Therefore be resolved Hawkins County Board of Commissioners grants an extension of the current franchise rights to Hawkins County Emergency Medical Services until mid, midnight of June thirty, twenty twenty. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Metz, second by Commissioner Fields. Is there any discussion? If not, cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion carries. Next out of order resolution, oh nine, oh two, Mr. Metz.
To Hon- to the Honorable, Honorable Rick Brewer Chairman and members of Hawkins County Board of Commission in regular session met this twenty-third day of September twenty nineteen, resolution in reference appointment to fill vacancy of a full-time emergency management director for Hawkins County. Whereas emergency management director Gary Merle has resigned effective September thirty, twenty nineteen. And whereas the TCA fifty-eight dash two dash one ten states that the direct, director shall be appointed by the chief local elected official. And whereas after much consideration, Mr. Jamie Miller is appointed by the county mayor subject to the confirmation of the county commission to fill the position of full-time emergency management director for Hawkins County. Mr. Miller has served as an assistant to the emergency management director for several years and has the skills and knowledge necessary to fulfill, for fulfilling the duties of an EMA director. He has also had the qualification necessary to hold a position. Now therefore be resolved the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners confirms the appointment of Mr. Jamie Miller to fill the position of a full-time emergency manager, management director for Hawkins County, and further than all local emergency agencies in the county cooperate with Mr. Miller as he fulfills the duties required under this position. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Metz, second by Commissioner Alice. Is, uh, I have a question. Is, uh, Mr. Miller present?
He is.
If you wish to speak.
John's motion pretty much says everything that I would have to say. I'm certainly in this capacity because the deputy director for several years, he wasn't qualified for the position. I appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Miller? I think a couple of years ago, me and you and Gary had a discussion about the radio.
Yes.
Uh, what is your plan? I assume they're still messed up.
Correct.
What is, do you have any plans right now to, what you're gonna do to fix the radio?
I don't have an action plan for that now because I've not had the opportunity to vet that situation and see what that situation is and come up with comprehensive plan on how to take care of that.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to do a submission. I appreciate your support and work and, you know, appreciate the county mayor, also the support of working with all ladies and your friends and neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Motion by Commissioner Thacker to adjourn, second.